Liberty and Justice for All.
All right, call this meeting to order. Everybody had a chance to review the amended agenda?
What was amended on it? I didn't notice.
The IT thing, right?
Conflict of interest with the agenda? And then I'll continue with the reading of the minute.
November first, twenty twenty-two, Board of Supervisors met at nine AM with Cal Schultz Chairman presiding. Members present were Hayden Rossberg, Schultz, Gugan, both minutes of the previous meeting read and approved. The board approved changes status for Catalina Gibbons to full-time interpreter to in public health. The board approved hiring of Ora Leah, Ora Leah Saldana on call as needed PRN, home health hospice LPN in public health. There was a discussion with Michelle Carlson from Family Crisis Center updating the board about the agency. A motion was made by Hayden seconded by Scoop to approve additional concrete work at the towers. Change order. Twenty-four thousand, six hundred fifty-three dollars per tower site, concrete and grounding. Motion passed unanimously. A discussion was made with the board about Beaver Bounty. No action was taken at this time. Motion was made by vote seconded by Hayden to this deciding to decide city center request for proposals approval and send to publication. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Rossberg seconded by vote to approve setting time for hearing and notice to vacate streets in Kenwood. November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two at ten AM in the Board of Supervisors room. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Rossberg second second by vote to approve courthouse restroom renovation, concrete, special inspections. Certified Testing Services, Inc. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Hayden seconded by vote to extend the burn ban for Crawford County for November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two. Motion or motion passed unanimously. Discussion was made with the board about the magnanimity product property property by Colin Johnson. Crawford County Attorney Austin and Mike were present for the discussions. On motion due seconded, the board adjourned eleven forty-five AM. Agendas for the next meeting are posted and available at the courthouse on Friday, four thirty PM preceding the next meeting.
Who was that deciding? What was that about?
I think it was I mean, in the agenda or on the agenda last week.
I know what it was, but why is it deciding should be discussed?
Approving approving city center RFPs and set for publication.
That's a weird word to use there, I thought. Doesn't really define what we're discussing.
What would you like it to be then? We'll change it.
It should be a dear and read the sentence again.
One time. By vote seconded by Hayden to to deciding city center requests for proposals.
It should maybe just be approved. Prove RFP for city center.
Either discuss or.
Or maybe just eliminate to deciding and seconded second by Hayden. City center request for proposals approve and send to publication.
There you go.
Yeah.
Remove it?
Yeah.
We'll just remove to deciding.
Any other changes?
Good changes and thanks for your addition to adding. Adding their names.
Thank you for accommodating me.
Well, no, and that's why we send that stuff out early so we can get that information before the minutes are printed. Just saying. Megan, no question, send it off.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks. My job to.
Oh, well, we're just.
We still got the press here though.
I was thinking about that yesterday, Wednesday. He was still upset about us extending the burn man. That was an accident. We don't need people doing it.
Virtually. Exactly.
A day later said, I've got a truth poll. I want to burn.
We had half the Western Iowa fight grass fire yesterday. You know, we haven't had, we had only since we did that, I think we had one day that didn't have a lot of wind.
They're stealing my report.
Sorry, we'll shut up.
My report when a supervisor's report I land a couple of calls and you're talking about what I wanted.
Well, just be quiet then until the auditor gets back in her room.
Let her go first.
Practice.
I want to know. Oh, never mind. Just be quiet. I want to know what this.
Be quiet, put our heads on our desk.
It's on our desk and the auditor's calling.
Yes.
He wouldn't keep talking. Just don't look at each other when we're making conversation.
Talk to ourselves.
I'm very good at that.
Sometimes I do need to consult an expert, so I will talk to myself.
All right, let's start with supervisor report. Jerry, it's hard to try to steal the wind out of your sail earlier, so why don't we just let you?
I did have a call about the burn ban wanting to know if the burn ban was still on. And I said, yes, absolutely, but I would have thought after reviewing what happened over at Charter Oak that but I will revert back to part of the conversation that I think it was Kyle you that said the other day when we talked about the burn ban. It isn't people lighting fires all the time, just like hand stoppers. It wasn't anybody lighting a fire over there. It's just a farm thing that happens just like over here happened. It's but that's just how fast it happens. So.
Yeah, and you know, to prevent a fire is burn man ain't gonna do that, but it'll prevent unnecessary fires.
Right, it at least slows things down.
Prevent unnecessary fires.
Right.
That's your most common way of starting a fire. Somebody burned a little piece, burn off of it, you know, the that's the obvious thing to avoid.
They could they could deduct it. They could follow it back.
Yeah.
Towards. My mother-in-law said two living right along highway and it's dry set. She does. She thinks about people, you know, just throwing a cigarette back and then that's the next thing. That's very easy.
You need a four nets against throwing cigarettes now.
What's that?
Need a four nets against throwing cigarettes.
What's that?
We gotta feel burn up from that.
From somebody throwing out just to.
Trace it right back to this.
Sometimes you'll still see it sitting there because if the wind blows it away. You'll come back to it.
Did you send it for DNA testing? Know before I'm assuming y'all got your invite to know before, right?
To what?
Know before that the tutorial on fishing things, the computer viruses. What else? Pretty trivial. I did have a lot of talk about that when Paul comes in. Or maybe I just won't discuss. I had somebody talk about it. Some growl. Other than that, I have a question for you. In the claims, we have more cremations. Did we discuss this before and I've just forgotten? Do we have a fund that that money is there for?
I was holding on to it.
You don't spill my coffee.
Just never used to see that. Now it's just like all the time. It seems like we have an autopsy cremation, something going on and it's like.
Well, an autopsy comes out of a different fund. Okay, doesn't pay that. We do. Other than general. General services. Thank you.
Yeah, I really didn't. Other than the.
The cremations, that's that's what they get.
That's all they get. They don't have another option. That's it. If the counties help them.
Right, that's the action.
Yeah, and we don't pay for parties. We literally only contribute towards cremation. If they do anything extra, then okay. And I feel like if they do anything extra, the county shouldn't pay at all, but just saying, it's just me.
Good point.
Don't know.
No, that's point.
I should ask Jake this question because I'll ask them. Obviously, yes, about the website cemeteries project that's on in the year in the claims, but I'll find out with that actually.
Jean?
Oh.
You have anything? You have anything?
I have a few small things. We had another PR meeting concerning the Wellness Center, which is nameless, maybe Crawford County or Wellness Center is what they're calling it. But that and this would be what we're going to consider ninety-five percent of the design. We had the senior citizens come to the public meeting and it was quite a full house of senior citizens expressing their concern over moving the where they're at. Some of it was a little legitimate, some of it not. They're concerned about how far they'll have to have to actually walk to get, you know, to it. Number one, they wonder why they're messing with where they're at. They like where they're at. Everybody, nobody likes change. Everybody hates change. I guess I can go either way with that.
The way that that changed.
Right, right. Their biggest, yes, Derek.
Who owns that building now?
City Dennis.
City Dennis. So is there anything saying they have to move out of that building if they like it?
There really isn't. There really isn't, but that that building needs a lot of repair. It's really not cost effective. So they're going to have another meeting, the city administrator, manager and parks and recs. And they're going to have a one-on-one meeting with them so that all of these things can be a little bit hashed out. But it was surprising that they hadn't had that conversation with them. I think once they, if they could see how much nicer this is going to be, their biggest concern is that they're going to eventually be charged to use this because they do use that senior center for like somebody that has a funeral and they don't really have a church. They use that for their after funeral celebration. And so they're really concerned that with the cost of all of this, that they're going to have to be paying a fee to use it. So those are some things that were really, really well taken by our.
They're so heavy. I think so they're gonna end that there and put that out there.
Right, 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 right.
So where are you going to feed him that?
Out there. There's the we.
Did you see the plan?
Yep, they did.
Yeah, I saw a part of the plan.
So there's the kitchen area is going to be in here and so one of the discussions were, do we want commercial grade appliances? Or do we just want a regular stove, a regular refrigerator? The gal that's doing the cooking down there now really said just a regular family setting is really all they need for their their purposes. Yes.
About how many people do they feed a day? Do you know?
I do not know. I think it's a big number. I think they do a lot of Uper playing down there. I think that, you know, they have that perpetual garage sale that's there that you know, if you want to just drop things off that the people can pick from. I know when my mom passed away, that's where she wanted her stuff to go is over.
And then the money from their garage sale goes to the seniors.
To have the seniors. They they were really, really upset. I mean, yeah, people that you don't usually see at functions being upset where they're concerned about how we're going to pay for this and their taxes are going to go up. And just really, really a big conversation about that. And so just kind of.
So they really weren't paying much attention to it till they heard their name.
Correct, correct, correct. But, you know, in reality, this would be a wonderful asset to our community.
That's what it would look like.
I'm telling you, I passed the one in Blair and I was like really blown away at how that looked.
And, you know, if we took just this part of it and talked about the original Wellness Center that we that I had a vision of when we originally started this with our ARCA funds. Everything would would still be going. It's this big part over here that we're the big cost is really really coming in for us.
Is it because of dirt working or?
No, it's just the size of it and just the overall parking and all of it.
The park that Smithfield and Monogram are throwing a lot at.
Two million dollars is the number right now, but I'll skip right to the page there and where you guys are invested in.
Well, I will tell you with the with, I will tell you with this soccer field thing. It is a need because right now on Saturdays and Sundays in downtown city, they're coming down there and using the gym. I mean, you go by there a Saturday night and that place is rocking with that. It looks like there's cars all over the place.
It absolutely. We had our soccer people there. There was a whole section that was, you know, our soccer boat. We had a guy there that would really get behind it if we could have a golf range in there, if we could practice golf, you know. And all of everything is is doable in this huge space that we all envisioned. You could do anything in there. But it all costs money to have the simulated golf, you know, if somebody wants to pay for that.
Right.
And, you know.
It can be there.
Yeah.
They did one up. They started to do one up there at the golf course. We didn't have high enough ceiling.
Yeah, so this.
They might. They might be willing to contribute.
Yep, so so there's always, there is, nobody really isn't in favor of the concept of a place to go. And we really do believe, I believe, that as a senior citizen myself, once they get to see that there will be as much parking that that is not any further away and there's gonna, we're gonna have a bunch of, so here would be this is their tables, this is their kitchen, this is the parking lot, there's parking lot down here. You know, once they sit down, we're hoping to calm some of their concerns and I don't know how you assure.
They haven't seen this yet?
It was it was on the big screen last yesterday. We had a big screen, not yesterday. Was, but just kind of let you know the how this is progressing. But this is the numbers here. I have that around.
You started bringing all this stuff in it. Still would it somewhere still want something else added into it.
So.
Is there pickleball court in this?
Yes, there.
I think that is the common thing.
Well, that was the whole.
So what are the numbers? Are we going to say?
It's on the agenda.
If you brought it up in a.
If you brought it in a public meeting, I think you gotta say.
It was a public meeting.
It is a public meeting. Always is a public meeting.
Before only two of us.
I'm just saying.
Estimated construction total is twenty-three million, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eighty thousand square feet.
How many square feet?
That does not include the architect and design fees, which traditionally is four percent to eight percent, depending on the hands-on ability. You know, if we need them there all the time, keeping the general contractor, it could be as much as eight. Doesn't include furniture and equipment, does not include computers and AV equipment or security equipment.
Somebody from Crawford County wins the lottery and I hope so.
Well, I ran and got a lottery ticket while we were in the middle of this meeting last week because I was feeling lucky. I had announced that I will pay for the thing in cash once I want it.
So now we're really at the the fundraising.
We are.
Portion of it.
So while I'm on that subject.
We're about twenty million short.
Ten.
That's not as bad as I thought.
No, me either.
I'm encouraged. Keep up the good work.
That is, that's just.
That's good. That's good to hear.
You know, people that are, you know, nobody's written anything down, but this committee's been working on the concept for over a year and so they have visited with people in high places. You know, for where their interest in the concern, that's kind of how this, you know, so that once again goes to that the project is now a little bit, but I I just, we just keep plugging along and I use the word plugging along.
Plugging tracks.
Hoping to be able to accomplish all the needs and wishes and desires and at some point in time, we're not quite there. Understand if we can go through with the whole or if we are going to have to have more of a master plan of getting this accomplished. Now, we wouldn't see this till twenty twenty-five is actually the goal possibly by the time we, because this is where we had to start. So we have something to show. They're working on the brochure.
Did your architects do any of this stuff as far as how it's gonna, how much money is it going to take to operate this facility?
That's what our marketing people did.
They're working on that now.
Well, we had that done prior, that, you know, we had all those forms that went out and they surveyed people, you know, what they were willing to pay and how many. So they figured it would take seven hundred families paying sixty dollars a month. But that was when it was just the walking path, the pickle courts, it didn't include the what we now call the complex of which, you know.
It'll be the Crawford County Wellness Center sponsored by Summit Carbon Solutions.
Well, you know.
Friend of the Midwest.
Well, in the marketing study, it was suggested that we don't have a government entity associated to the name because that sometimes turns people off that it's the, you know, Dennis and Ross or the Crawford County. You know, right now it is the Crawford County Wellness Center, which is because it's for Crawford County. But it could just be, you know, a complex, you know, something that is more generic to. Well, you can have naming rights if you pay twenty-five percent of the cost of a certain area. So if you want your name on this, what we call the complex, the pickleball court, you can have it.
Hayden Senior said.
Well, I did not win the lottery, sorry. That does seem to be fitting, Jean Hayden, but so so there's a lot of moving parts to it yet.
Well, it sounds like you guys are greasing the right moving parts at the right time here.
I feel very confident with the committee that is working on fundraising. They brought in, you know, some of the even type folks to kind of see where's the pool. The pool is, you're only going to see that on this drawing because it's it's.
See, this is the building I'm looking at in that picture.
Right, right, right.
And then the pool's separate.
Yep, and this, yeah, this is.
What's that?
That is, they're hoping to move the aquatic center at some point. This is where it is now, but it's in part of that this whatever's red is a master plan. That's another phase. One thing is is we're not at a lack.
What was your comment about bringing in flood?
Oh, for helping with our fundraising, some of the ideas, the way that they used endowments and things to reach their goal.
How much did it cost them to build that?
Oh, gosh.
That was probably.
I just, I just want to, where else? What's the entity that's going to run this facility? Is it going to be part of Dennis and running it or you got that already thought of?
I'm so glad you asked that.
I haven't heard any of this. I have not heard any of this.
Tomorrow night, I, we have another meeting with the YMCA. There's been a lot of chatter here about them coming in. There is a proposal out there. So tomorrow we'll know a little bit more about where the YMCA is with this. Yeah, they've been coming to the meetings, sitting quietly, listening, and so there's going to be a proposal out there. Why is that? That meeting is tomorrow night at five thirty. So I'll go to that city hall.
What's that?
Looks like we're targeting city hall tomorrow at five thirty if we can get a quorum. So.
Sure.
So I can have an update on how that's going. So that that'll be key if the YMCA has sat through all of this, all of our marketing, all of our plans specs and they want to be a part of it, that answers that question. So we still are in the infant stages of getting this up and off the road, but.
Best to clear those things up now than.
Absolutely, absolutely. The public meetings to me are are very, I am always interested.
Go last year. Well, it's like when we when we build boulders is the same problem.
Absolutely.
It only got worked on my part and the other part was fallacy.
I believe we have a good plan and I do.
I hope so.
But I think, yeah.
What else do you have?
I'll talk to Paul about my railroad crossing over in Deloitte and I continuing to have conversations on the mental health amount of people that we service. I'm hoping to get to see city this week sometime with Dawn to walk through and kind of ask.
Check on them. They don't do nothing to get paid a lot?
I'm not sure if I can have access to the questions. That's what I'm looking for is the questions that they ask to be admitted, you know, what what hoops you have to jump through.
You lost a good time too.
I did.
Yeah, Richard.
Yeah, I did. I did. But his health and but I think your niece will be just as eager about wanting to find out what's going on. So that's kind of what's going on this week. Yeah, I think it's on.
I had an interview last week with, I believe, I own Public Radio. Freelancers, but she was about the wellness, the health of Crawford County.
Oh, oh.
And so this this Wellness Center is actually going to be a major factor in improving that. Hope for, there's ninety-nine counties and we're in the bottom.
Tier.
We're in the very bottom. We're not ninety-nine, but we're so close we can hit it with a rock. Just, you know, the different things that affect health, obesity, diabetes, those types of things. Drinking, smoking, you know, and a lot of it would be, well, could be contributed to our immigrant population, but I mean, that's just, they kept, a lot of them come from countries that don't have that pre pre-screening and early, early childhood development stuff that we have. That's obviously a big contributing factor, but you know, you got to be in a vista this way higher than we, or that's higher than we are, way higher.
Dynamics of BB County are very similar to ours.
Exactly. You know, I mean, and even even Woodbury County has got a large, you know, immigrant population. So, I mean, we can't lay it all on that. We need to find better ways. You know, we have people last winter, all winter that were wanting to get on on paths, walking paths and couldn't. So, I mean, that's why this here would be actually quite vital, especially I, you know, to me, if I'm a senior hearing that you can have your dinner there, if they can work out something where they can still have their little functions there. I I think that having that walking path for them after they eat or before they eat, I mean, after you eat, obviously you'd better, but most of us like to nap after that, which doesn't contribute to a healthy environment, but for the same token, you know, I mean, I I think that that's, you know, the the more I talk to this young lady, the more I kind of, we we probably need to do something about this, you know.
I.
See what we can do to, and I think we are.
You said, you know, my grandparents always had a nap after they ate and they love to be old, old people.
Yeah.
So do we ever, I think we need to contribute to some of our dietary stuff that we've switched to. I mean, they they ate everything that they.
They fresh. It was fresh, you know, and in fact, I was down with the doctor last week later in the week. And he said, like, even, I would think like my meats that I get at Fairways Deli counter. He said, no, well, not so much. I said, well, that's okay for me, right? And not so much there's triglycerides and all these other things that end up in that meat, you know, for preservation and stuff like that. He said, then that's not necessarily good for your inside. Gosh, I was thinking I'm doing a good job and obviously it looked like I might be missing the market a little bit.
Dale White told me one time, taste good spit it out.
Oh, yeah. But it's right. I mean, in any event, I think, Kyle, you had a great point. You know, we we need to, maybe it's, maybe it's actually the farmer markets, you know, trying to find ways to help promote that stuff.
I would agree.
I mean, getting that more fresh fruit out to everybody. Maybe we've got a, maybe we've got an angle that we need to promote there. I don't know. I mean, it's just something that I was thinking about. Actually, it's been a lot through the last week because.
Small businesses that are hitting the mark on that, the GLCs, the NHB. And there, I'm sure there's a lot of others that are out there, but.
But, you know, that's just it. If we hit it on all that, I mean, I bet if we go out to the high school and ask for a raise of hands on how many of them kids know how to can, it'd probably scare you. I don't like there'd be a hand in the air. You know, my wife still cans, but I don't even know a lot of wives that can. And I'm just saying, these are things where you got healthier food. Do you know how to can? No, thank you.
You go to the grocery store and pick it up as metal.
Comes in cans.
But I'm just saying, there, there's just a thing. And I mean, maybe that's part of what we do to help folks get a little healthier. You know, just talking about how, maybe you talk to ISU, hey, why don't you have a workshop?
First you have to know how to grow and then you.
You gotta know someone that knows how to.
Exactly. That'd be the.
Cause they always have that.
There's usually plenty farmers markets that have.
Yep.
Purchase your produce and then can it.
First of all, they could teach you how to grow it.
Yeah.
And then I could teach you how to.
You know, and we actually, the, the, that, the master gardener classes, they gotta have so many volunteers during each year to keep their status. You know, right? There's ways for them and a lot of them master gardeners know how to can it. So maybe those are things that you could actually.
I think I could Google it.
Yeah, yeah, well, you probably could. Careful though with that high pressure. Yeah, you know, you can freeze though. I don't know, you watch videos all the time where guys will be out in the garage doing stuff and then I know the one that was a lady was, was basically moder. Doing the moderating on the little video. The guys are shoving the corn cubs down through some little deal, looked like a cake pan, what it looked like. And they're just shelling it and then the ladies are hauling it away and they're putting it in packages and freezing it.
Angel put through cake pans, that's absolutely what it is. Yep, that's, yep, that's.
See, you know more than you.
I do know more than I put.
You are, you are crafty.
I tell you.
But anyway, that was really, it was an enlightening interview, probably most so for her, for me than her. I mean. I, I, you know, I didn't really speak to the medical aspect. She asked a lot about the hospital. What would it be like if we didn't have a hospital? What things we'd be concerned with? And I said, well, thanks, we probably already are. We. Have trouble with our EMS supplying people for that. But anyway, so I had a nice interview with her. Hopefully that benefits us. I don't know. I know they also got Don pulled aside and interviewed him too. So is it gonna be an article? Hopefully I didn't embarrass it. Anyway. Oh, the ribbon cutting. Has anybody been back to the little fun zone in Pizza Ranch?
No.
No, you needed to just check it out. I mean, for having a kid's party, I mean, obviously you don't have any that young anymore, but. It was really, I was impressed with it actually, you know, so we had a, we had a ribbon cutting last week and.
Did they add on rumor?
Yeah, it's actually, I don't know if, I don't know if any of that structure back there was back there, if they had to add on. I don't know, but it's a big room. It's, it's bigger than our, our room here.
Somewhere else. I don't, I didn't see any new construction.
It's right behind the, the restaurant. It's right behind it. And then they made two more party rooms. So like if you've got. A young family, you know, with younger kids and I think even thirteen, I mean, Allison and I were having, we were playing some thing where it's virtual reality. You had to swing and stuff. Anyway, it was kind of cool, but. The. The, anyway, so if you haven't had a chance, that was a really a nice addition. Youngster way, you know, just kind of gave it a Chuck E. Cheese error without having to bring Chuck E. Cheese to town. Chuck E. Cheese, yeah. And. Then the fire, I mean, I had a few calls too. You know, and I just like to remind them, I didn't get the call back from the one that I thought, well, I did right away that day. And then the next day I thought, well, kinda answered it. That feels pretty good. Anyway, so the fire. Kind of shut everybody up about that, that we actually weren't out of our minds for doing that. I mean.
Easy breeze, it's gonna rain.
What do we have for fire departments? I said there's eighteen trucks there.
Seventeen fire departments from all the way from Panama up to.
So if that, if that doesn't tell you the reason for having to have something like that, I don't know what the heck will. So anyway, that's. That's really all I got. Yep, that's it.
I will say that those.
I, which gets too short.
Trying to think back what I did last week. About third, oh, Eric, go ahead. I think, God, sorry.
I can talk about it now.
You have a Santa Claus?
Nope, you bleak that out a little bit right here in the side.
See what he's gotta say. We've, he's been, he's been holding a cap by its tail for so long.
Region twelve has become the distributor. And we are kind of fifteen million dollar. Investment that, and it's gonna be for enhancing products. For exactly what you guys were talking about, but more and more like if it's cattle and you're gonna go, you got only certain places you can go.
So they're gonna, maybe like if somebody was looking to open a locker, they'd score pretty high on that.
Yes, they would score high on that. And then they're, the, the fifteen million is, is statewide for Iowa. The rest of the nation kind of went off on their own a little bit in there. It took about six months to, to get it finally put all together. So. If somebody wants to start a, start a facility or, or enhance a facility and stuff like that, we have the monies to do.
Be nice to give one in Crawford County.
Yes, the locker.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You know, the hardest part?
USDA government?
No. Getting somebody to run the damn thing. A cutter. We can, I actually was this close, the guy at Borden Arrow. I was probably a week late of talking to him. Or we'd have built one in Crawford County to help supply him and we'd have a lot. I've been working on.
Board Mary, being over in Carol.
He's building his own south of town. Otherwise, he'd already started. Otherwise, we had a chance to get.
Yeah.
I'd actually, we talked about, there was a, there was a little team of us, one of them was gone, but. We were, we were actually trying to build a walker in Crawford County. We either can do it in Charter Oak or actually had a spot located right here in Dennis.
So region twelve will be doing that. He's got to build the, the structure underneath a little bit. We're gonna have a, be a part-time, almost a part-time, full-time. Person to call around and, and monitor. He has to cover the whole state to be used for a variety of. We had to get everything from the, as far as okay criteria, we needed to do it. But it was a big deal for us and. Rich was working on this for the past year and a half, two years when he first read it. He says it. At first, he says, he, they put it down and it's no back about two, three weeks later and read it again. He says, I, this. And he said something about this thing, just go.
So this is fifteen million for the region.
For the state. Fifteen millions of state and we'll be able to spend it. But there, there's. Smithfield can't apply for. On a grant.
Gotta be a local.
It's gotten to smaller. But there are, if they're doing. Actually doing, if you had a three.
As long as it fits that criteria.
If you have three plants or small entities that are doing this and they have, they can join up with each other and stuff and different things or.
So is it kind of specific or going overture like Jerry was asking, if this were locker or if somebody wanted to open up?
Crematory.
Oh, my. No, I know, I know. You're right. A crematory. What if I want to build a crematory? For what? Like the cremation.
We can't do that.
How about, but if you wanted to open a creamery?
I know.
That's a great idea. Open a creamery because I know that there's a company out there that makes baby formula that's looking to some partner up with somebody to make more baby formula. So that you. You're already in the right wheelhouse.
Money invested with the. Chicken thing down in, in the thing that we, we're, we're a part, we've got. Probably about three million tax up now from there down by Fremont. No, no, it's down by Stewart. It's Stewart.
Oh, Stewart.
And the guy came in from California here about six, seven years ago and he. We threw.
Eggs.
We put a bunch of my eggs. Not it. He takes and processes.
Oh, he's.
Powder, he does. That holds into there for front boxes and stuff.
They still have chickens make powdered egg.
Yes, right.
Down by Stewart, right?
They take it when they, when they run through a thing, they.
Yeah. And he recon.
So that's what I couldn't talk about the last three months, cause we, we had heard that we, we were a finalist for the, doing the job, the doing the work for it. And they're very excited.
Region twelve is a fiscal agent for the state with that fifteen million dollars.
Yes.
That's just the tough part is to find the person to run the thing. Got a guy down by Dunlap wants to build one down by Dunlap. I was trying to talk him into coming up here. I said, I know some people, I hope you finance it. Not even gotten what you guys would do.
Would it be, how, how big one is he looking at?
Well, he's just wanting to build like a normal locker.
We could do that. We could do something with that.
Where you can do.
I talked to.
Me throughout the year and also have room for deer in the fall.
Yeah, that's a different story. That gets kind of, these guys that have lockers are having problems getting deer through USDA. And so these guys would have to stop and reprocess, rebuild the percent. They don't take them anymore over. Half, half your guys are, are big enough. They don't wanna mess with those because it really. It interrupts, interrupts.
Talk to the people that do it. They said, that's where they make all their money. They charge so much money and hunters will just pay off the wazoo to do a deer.
Right.
Don't take any time to do it.
But I, there's a lot of hassle goes with it here too.
It could be.
There's people that don't know who's getting a lot and a lot of accusations made because of that.
That's always a, a risk of going to any lockers that are actually getting the meat that you brought in.
Even heard that with Garrett's, sending them where they're sending it.
If you.
I talked to Garrett's, they were students smoking. And if they're smoking and doing processed beef and like that, they can very easily, they're so far now, but if, if there's a next stage or two in there that they, they gotta go. They could, they could probably apply for that. I already talked to him. Yeah, that's, yeah.
What else?
That's it.
That's it. That's what, the burden has been lifted off you. I can see it. You have a little air out of your chair now. You're an older burden.
Yeah, just wake me up when the meeting's over.
They actually do most of their teeth and colors that we post in.
They're actually selling teeth and colors at their facility. Who?
Yeah. Well, that's what.
Went to last week. When this meeting was going on, region twelve was next door with the derelict building program.
Oh, okay.
And so I think that our small towns, I, I didn't recognize the mayor's there, but it had to be a, a. City or town, less than five thousand people. So it's not for the Dennison's. It's not for, you know, the bigger communities. But if, if you have a derelict building in your community, uh, region twelve will help to restore that. There's money available. So if anybody.
Dave and I went to that years ago when I first rolled that out. Yeah, that, it's available, but the communities have. My into it or. And it was open to everybody, but I think Dave and I were like the only ones from Crawford County that were there that time.
Yeah, should have had the mayors there, you know, Charlie Rook's mayor.
I had two, two, so quite a few of my D on it.
Didn't you bring that to one of your, didn't you have a little session on that when you guys were doing your?
I do have the. PowerPoint if anybody has a mayor or any community is interested in seeing what it actually could do for them. I think of towns like Charter Oak that might have a building downtown that with some help could bring it back.
I think, and sometimes these small communities get overwhelmed. You know, they, they look at, focus too much on the small stuff, the dogs at large or whatever and forget about.
Can we ever finally get rid of the one up in, in Deloitte?
Dog?
Oh, you know, grocery store.
I think the grocery store is gone. I think, I do believe. Yeah. Can we help facilitate some attacks?
She, Jane the grocery.
Slice lunch to me. I can remember dusting the shelves. To be amazed what we could all do at that grocery store. All the guys would come read the paper and put their pants in their Mountain Dew and chug it down.
Yep.
Back in eighties.
Well.
That derelict building though, if anybody's driving around a small community and thinks, man, that.
Looks a little.
There's a few business cards out in Charter Oak, I'm sure.
Well, we can get the PowerPoints, you know, to the cities.
Or try in a small city.
We're looking pretty good on Main Street.
You guys are, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Kirsten, Kirsten Berry put in the new beauty shop. It's looking really good. Connie Garrett's bought three buildings in a row. So she's got three things going. I believe the fellow across the street bought Curly's and is going to open up a restaurant, etc. And yeah.
You guys are doing good down there.
Yeah, and.
Yeah, you know, they get a flame going now.
Yeah, they do. God bless them.
Being a flame, that's what's my week last week.
Flames?
Smoke and flame.
A lot of hours at the fire station last week, maybe between that fire vehicle rollovers and another fire.
That was in the middle of the night the other night.
We had at least thirty hours in within twenty-four hour time to.
How long did it take to extinct from start to?
We were gonna have trucks on scene till at least eight thirty the next night.
I was gonna say, yeah, on Thursday, Monday.
Go start right.
Rain, what's that?
Over three hundred and.
Bales?
They were burying them. You see that?
Several hundred dollars.
Pretty true.
It's kind of like. I know. Once the, once the building warms up, it, it has a lot of heat.
It's country warm.
It, it is, which is nice. It's gonna feel really nice on Friday morning. Yeah, we're not used to it yet, are we? It wasn't that nice gradual condition.
Got a couple of permits here anyway.
Yeah, the one, just the service line for residents of the avenue. And that will be signed off for those. The other two are the power going to the tower. Towers will have power.
Power to tower.
Yep, so that's what that is.
You could see them out in Charter Oak's site. A lot of vehicles there yesterday.
Yeah, they're actually got it.
That's what they were gonna do.
There's two separate country companies. And I, I didn't realize because he told me Charter Oak was gonna be last. And then yesterday he's calling, he said, I need this Ralph to get the cows away from the area. So I gave him Ralph's number. He said, I'll just talk to him. Yeah. Yeah, I got his number. Yeah, good, good. Yeah, not a lot of new stuff here today. The, the bridge, they continue to work on it. Probably my Thanksgiving, we just gotta let it clean up now, stripping forms and crap and areas. So it'll be open soon.
Grounding.
Well, yeah, sometimes you have little pockets and little, you know, you gotta go in and you gotta come in. Clean it up and grind it, you know, just minor. So anyhow, the, the bridge and the asphalt projects, again, I don't have them on here yet, but I'll put them on here. They're going to wedding, you know, the one in January and the, the bridge in January, the. Asphalt project in February. So see how that comes out. The, our crews, great crew continues to just. Go both right through the projects and system dry. We don't get ready. The soil is so dry. Yeah. At the best conditions to be building things out of.
Letting it lower.
Yeah, it's dry. So. But anyhow, they'll probably, they'll be having it here in another week and a half or so. And we'll see where we go from there depending on what this weather does. And the bridge crew, they'll probably be, well, they will, they'll finish that bridge up by Thanksgiving and then we're gonna. You know, basically just go to kind of maintenance on bridges and get ready for next year's project. So we're not gonna dive into another project. For them. So things are kind of winding down. Boeing should be done here soon.
He was out early this morning.
Yeah.
It was before seven. I was going south of town. He was already out there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he used to go get her. It looked nice when it told that.
Well, he can start earlier now. The time changes.
Yeah, so, uh, yeah. There, this is just kind of some routine language change. It, uh, it, it's kind of some clarification on, on the drug and alcohol policy. So. Um, we needed approval and I think we'll set, stand for back and have them sign it. And then I'll get you the original. I'll take a copy of it. Uh, so this is just approving some language.
What does it actually change?
Well, do you want me to read it all? It's, it's just, it's just basically taking some of the language. Uh, or it's adding, yeah, we're, we're taking, I, I should, I should say taking out, uh, the, uh.
It's hard to know what you're taking out when you got.
With the reduction.
Yeah, um. But they do have it before and after on here. So.
A national thing?
Yes. So it's, it's essentially what it is, is it's, it's clarifying. So. If you, if you test point oh two, okay, you have to be removed from a safety sensitive position. If you test point oh four, then, then you're cited. That's a, that's a problem if for CDL operation. So what it's doing is it's kind of clarifying that, that time period that, that between point oh two and point oh four. Okay, so if you're. You get randomly sampled and you test point oh two, you can't get back in the truck. Okay, and, uh, so then, you know, you have to be put into a non-safety sensitive position during that time period. Uh, for at least twenty-four hours. Okay, and so, but if you test point oh four, obviously. Then you're, you're done. It's a citation.
This, this is during a random sampling.
Yeah, yeah. So it's if a driver is found to have an alcohol concentration between the point oh two and point oh four. Is prohibited from performing a safe, safety sensitive. So you haven't exceeded the limit, but you tested positive for alcohol in your blood. So.
It's not as big a problem now as it, as it used to be. It still exists. I, but I remember when I was a kid riding one of them and they'd stop for dinner at mom and pop shops on the way out going out to west and they'd have a beer with dinner. Just one, nobody can get drunk, just have a beer, way they go. Yeah, so I mean, that, that don't happen anymore.
No, no, I think if you want to protect your CDL.
Was socially acceptable.
Yeah, you're not gonna be cited at point oh two, but you're gonna be removed from operation.
How often do they randomly test or is it?
Okay, so we, we, we're, all of our employees that are CDLs are in a pool. And every quarter, so January through end of March, okay, is a quarter, you know, so the four quarters in the year. Uh, they give me a list of employees and it can be three, it can be eight, you know. So they, they, uh, you know, it's, it's CJ Cooper and Associates. They provide us with the list. They're kind of our. They're administrator of that program for us. And so.
What does it cost? Sixty-five bucks?
But it's between, it's between thirty and thirty and fifty somewhere.
Region twelve is sixty-eight bucks per test.
Yeah, well, what are they all doing? So, so, so CJ Cooper is our administrator. They administer the program. They give us the random list. We get, we get the employees. Then we have a testing facility, which is the lateral hospital. You know, and those testers, you know, again, fifty, sixty bucks a piece. Depending on what you do, some are just alcohol, some are drug and alcohol. And so. So, you know, each, each time we probably get a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five dollars per person. They have a test because then the tests have to be, um, their, the results are sent back to CJ Cooper and CJ Cooper kind of is the. Keeper of all of the information. If we ever get audited, that's where we go to.
These random people, you call them out, they do their thing and then they're tested. Some are tested just for alcohol and some are tested for drugs and alcohol. Just random, whatever's happening.
Some are tested just for drugs. Usually it's just for drugs and then sometimes you'll get the alcohol thrown into it. That's how it works for my stuff.
Yeah, so you're gonna have to either do, but you know, while you're, that's what they take and, and order, get to both.
Do they have a certain time limit when they have to report for that test?
Call you about ten to seven as you're sitting there waiting to clock in. So head to the hospital.
Can I ask one more question while we're on the subject?
Yeah, no problem.
If you suspect somebody, if they just have weird behavior and you just feel kind of uneasy, can you require that or?
If you have reasonable suspicion. And this is, uh, Jack Reed just did, uh, a really good program. Kath and I both sat in on it. It was two hours long. It was all about this, you know, so there are different times where you test pre-employed, you know. You know, so you offer someone a job that's contingent upon.
When they off, when they apply for the job, do they have to go be tested?
If they're offered, okay, you offer them a job, if the offer's contingent upon all of that.
They have a certain amount of time to go take that test.
Uh, yeah, that's probably a little, it's a little less random, you know, so you try to schedule that.
Working with their work schedule they're presently at.
Yeah, and so you, you, you know, yeah. And that's the other thing they talk about, the length of time that certain drugs and certain alcohol products remain in the body. Uh, and so. I, I tried to get, we're gonna have our Christmas lunch, uh, on the twenty-second of December. I mean, I thought that was just.
That's my birthday.
Well.
You're having a birthday party?
I thought it would be good for the, uh, employees to hear some of this, maybe not the whole two-hour program, but, uh. But it's really important part of what we do. And you know, because you're, you're an employee and you get this thing, you know, I call them up, say, hey, you know, come up to the office, take this form, you gotta go. What's this all about? You know, and then, you know, they have to register with Clearinghouse. Uh, we have to run queries once a year on the Clearinghouse to see. You know, have they had any violations that they haven't been reported? But if you have a CDL and you have violations, you, in order to keep your CDL this day and age. You gotta play by the rules or you're gonna lose it.
They all know that, so I'm so.
They do, but.
I'm fairly certain.
They have to report all of that, anything, I mean, the whole. The, the personal vehicles are not connected to the CDL. So you're, you can drive a personal vehicle and it's completely different. All of these rules here apply to the CDL operation of a CDL vehicle. So you, you, if you get pulled over and you're driving your car and you test point oh four, you're not gonna lose your license because the rules there are point oh eight. Okay. If you're driving a truck, a CDL vehicle and you test over point oh four, you're gonna lose your license. Well, yeah, I mean, the same laws there would, would, would apply. This is just drug and alcohol. But I think all the other laws probably are the same whether you're driving a semi or you're driving a car, you know, you run stop sign.
So we need approval.
It sounds like we've vetted that, we've made the improvements that need to be made. So I'll make a motion that we approve the adjustments to secondary roads, drug and alcohol policy.
This was the, uh, vetted and rearranged by Department Transportation.
This was provided to us, yeah. Yeah.
I think DOT was probably influenced.
Yeah, these are the new guidelines. He just provided them to us and said, hey, you need to have a free policy. Don't have to, you know, have everybody sign a new form, but he said, well, what we'll do is we'll make a copy of this and we'll go out and all the paychecks.
Motion and a second. Any further discussions? Here and I don't see the vote all in favor of the adjustments to secondary roads, drug and alcohol policies, signify the same eye. All right, new motor graders delivered this week. Dump trucks have been delivered.
Actually, they're over in Carroll now, get the front ends lined and that's on Mac. So there, uh, as soon as they get that done, they'll be back and. They don't do it in their shop though. They send it to, uh. To someone else in Carroll. Yeah, they don't do that. But they're gonna have the front. We don't have anything to do with it. They just take it there. But anyhow.
Coming soon to a road near you.
Yeah, yeah, they're nice trucks. Real nice trucks. Find a motor race show at yesterday, the other one's coming tomorrow. And, uh, so yeah, they're.
It looks like a million dollars. That old saying is gonna have to be revised.
It looks like a lottery winning.
Yeah, so putting out there, uh, yeah, there, there come, things are coming in and I continue to work with, uh. Uh, other suppliers and other stuff. Yeah, met with all the foremen and our staff there last week for about three hours. Planning for the next year and a half, two years, what we're all gonna do and ready for. Stuff. So I made, uh. Type diagram. Does everybody want, whenever everybody wants one, I'm going to.
I think so.
But, uh, but anyhow, it, uh, it's really kind of, you know, eye opening. I mean, it's, it's. It looks a little daunting, but if you understand everything goes in the top and, and everything goes out the sides of the bottom.
All four of these, the last five. No, it doesn't.
You wanna just email it to me. Way to save money, thanks to me.
You're like this, this is me. Tells you where, how it's coming out, where, what department it's based in.
I've, I've got a couple of color ones. I just didn't.
There's color, anybody else color?
I actually stopped me in the store the other day, uh, with a concern about the railroad crossing in Deloitte. And I said, oh, if it's railroad, I don't know if we can touch anything there. And she said that it's just really, really bad going up to their farm. She bottoms out and I said.
I haven't been up there for a while. I don't know if the harvest traffic is maybe pounded on it some, but I'll take a look at it.
I did not know, but I wrote that down that I would.
That's pretty high traffic this time.
It is, they all are. Um, and unfortunately, we're limited somewhat. We can do, uh, immediately, I mean, we can do things up to the railroad crossing, but.
That's what I told her. Depending on how close it is to that railroad.
I don't want the liability of messing with the.
Yeah, and, and so, but I'll take a look. I know Steve Comstock, he's the local, uh, maybe national guy, if I talk to him. Steve's good.
It's nice having somebody who.
Yeah, he's kept that on U P, but I was kind of, you know, they come and go, he's still. They get to know Steve's been here for.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Yeah, good luck to all the candidates today.
Thank you.
I was doing last week, if we have a minute. Kind of got concerned about our active shooter plans in our schools. And so I, because we, I, I had heard. On TV and the one in the calls that were being made on Boulder, Texas. And so I just wanted to make sure that, uh. Greg's doing what he needs to with that and making sure that we're ready with our, um, emergency management. So I, I called, uh, and talked to Mike Pardon and he said that they are actively working on that. And that they're getting it all through the state and that Greg has been a great asset to, to work in with them. Because we would not want to happen what happened down in Boulder, Texas, where nobody knew whose responsibility it was to have them go in. You got, it was just heart wrenching to, uh, to watch and listen to these children inside these rooms calling their parents and saying. Somebody come help us, you know, and nobody, you see the people stand out there, but nobody gave that. So I don't know if we need to talk to our smaller schools or I, I'm gonna make sure that we're, you know, making sure that every school system in Crawford County. Has their plan approved and, uh, is ready to go. I, I just, I just.
Charter Oak has a plan, but the plan's only good as to how it's reacted to.
Right, right, yeah, yeah. You got people standing outside.
I think our schools have probably got a pretty good grasp on a plan, but what the reaction is after that plan is initiated is. Kind of out of their hands, but you know.
There's, we're that, who is your key person, you know, and is it Greg? Or is it the sheriff?
Should be the sheriff. On, on, on something, that's law enforcement, sure.
For sure.
Yeah, Greg can be in their support, I'm sure, but I mean, the sheriff would be the commander. Incident command until the FBI or some else.
Well, but you know, here we go again. Who's in charge? Who's in charge? Who really gets to rock?
Good question.
Bring that up and try to keep that on the.
See, the thing is, is most of our Dow City doesn't have a town cop and do they have a town cop?
We just have deputies that live in town.
So Dow City doesn't have a town cop, Charter Oak doesn't have a town cop, Sleswick doesn't have. So if they don't have a town cop, incident command, initial incident command rely with the sheriff and stuff.
One of those is, is contract.
Is everybody ready? That's my only reason for making that. We have the emergency management in the county.
I know we did that right away after, which one of them was it that they said?
This latest one was a Fiasco, if you watch the, uh, videos now, forty people out there with guns. Waiting to go in and little children. Oh, it's great talking about it. Um, calling and saying, please come help. And there's nobody coming in to help. Cause nobody's given the word and I just, uh.
No, I would not disagree with maybe emergency management could help facilitate a training, some, training.
Yes.
Of that. Cause that would be key, cause communication.
Communication.
Breakdown is inevitable in a, in a situation such as that.
That was.
That's one thing we took away from our big fire Wednesday was communication breakdown was. We made it work, but we gotta come up with a better communication plan on a large scale incident of that.
I wondered about that. Who made that call to, you know, get the school buses up to evacuate?
I know.
Was Kyle.
I suggested evacuation of Ricketts and then our emergency management took that and ran with it after that. You know, well, I thought we, in all and all between. The on-scene people and our emergency management, uh, everything was orchestrated probably about as best as it could be. I was the one put in charge due to the lack of our chief being on scene and I was on the first truck and I was the senior member like. Anyways, there, there's a lot of things that were happening quick and fast, such as a school shooting would also be. And so if you don't train.
Right.
For that. Fire, we get a reset and hopefully it never happens again and no property of any major value or lives were lost on this deal. So.
No buildings, no.
So I mean. Wouldn't be a good idea to.
I don't want to assume anything. I don't want to assume that everybody knows.
You know, they have their professional development days at these schools every other week. I think maybe that'd be a good, uh. Circle that our sheriff or emergency management person should be making and talking at these professional development trainings. And a large scale mock would probably not be a bad.
I know we've done it here before, but it's. I don't know how long, but I know we did it.
And unfortunately. Sometimes when it hits ears, it just, you can think it and hope it never happens, but.
I know.
When you say stuff out loud, people hear that and just say. When you say stuff out loud, people hear that and just say, well, I never thought of that, so.
Amen.
I was kind of, when they were first out in two thousand one, I know what better place would be come to infiltrate a small town's water supply. Most of the places are unsecured. Have hundreds of people dead before anybody knew what was going on. That's how, I don't know why I think like that. Yeah, we are. The most phone call I've healed was after the article about the tax abatement or whatever was
Oh, I got, yeah.
Comparing us to Little League baseball, when I say us, the volunteer fire service, the Little League baseball coaches and such that you're gonna pay them too, and I'm like, well. So you can't compare the two, and I said, most Little League baseball coaches already get paid. They do a charter.
Get paid?
Yes.
They get paid now, but I didn't, never got paid.
Oh, I didn't know.
Things have changed.
I know.
I get one of those calls too, it was like, well, you know, I work the food pantry pantry, are you going to?
Yep.
My, my, my response is that these people, men and women, are essential service to the citizens of the county, that if they do not, if we do not recruit or retain these, we will have to start paying for that, which would be kind of over a million dollars to provide the service and property. And I said that one caveat is the Little League baseball coach or food pantry employee, do they get called at two in the morning to go help search for a drunk suicidal person with a shotgun? That was, that was last Thursday. My extent of that search was hold on, pull up with a fire truck, this is law enforcement problem, I don't have a gun.
Amen.
If I see him, I'll yell at somebody on the radio.
Well, at what point then do you get mental health involved?
What's that number, nine eight?
I didn't even. I didn't write that on my hand.
Call nine eighty.
But, there are some very.
Apples and orange comparison.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the person that called, for me, that if it's about enticing young folks to come in, waiting at zero to four years, doesn't seem like a great enticement to take, it does, to, to maybe step that up, once you have your training, it doesn't have to wait till zero to four years, you know, that's for the enticement side, that was part of the conversation.
On the same token, there's members in my own fire department that if I was the chief, I would not approve. Because they have not taken any effort to get any training and or they, my participation level is probably not justifiable enough for me to sign that.
Well, I think that we will put that back on the agenda to discuss the pros and cons of the way that we do it.
Colin was working, I would, maybe Marco working on it, but I did.
So.
Colin did.
Those were the. Those were the majority of everything that happened to me last week, in my free time.
I will call Greg though.
He had a lot of free time.
Is it with him about?
I don't want the tax credit or abatement or whatever it's gonna eventually probably be, but can you join the fire department and just like help do other stuff and not have? I am not gonna go out.
We have that in the past, and we have one member that's our treasurer. That's all. That's all that person does.
Oh.
I think maybe that's where it should develop is that you have auxiliaries. Then you don't have to be covered under workman's comp insurance and such of that, so there was an auxiliary that would support the efforts of the organization.
What would the tiny H B on that box truck over there?
Is it a single axle, it's probably twenty five thousand, twelve and a half.
That's a guess.
They're working on the tag. Take that word guess out of it, it's like.
I'm sure it's a single axle. Twenty six thousand.
Visa truck. I'm trying to license that box truck back there behind that building of Adam's. Can't leave it parked there, he's gotta move it. Yet today.
We're at ten fifteen item, alright, cost allocation. Alright, let's take, discuss and take action for certification of cost allocation plan, this is something we do annually. If you wanna elaborate on it, you probably understand it, although we do it annually.
Right, it was in your folder.
Is this what bases our VHS authors, is that a different?
But the, so the expenses that they reimburse to the county, which is called an L A E. And I know it stands for something, but I can't find it right off the bat, of course, anyway.
Well, as I read.
These people help to determine what that reimbursement plan is.
This has to be done before any break can be determined.
Right. And it's kind of like taxes, we, we pay taxes in arrears, and this is figured, they pay L A E in arrears also based off of last year's. It's hard to audit that year and determine the L A E for, does that make sense? Can't.
Based in all and how many, and I just kind of looked through it in the first five minutes that we were here, but is it based on how many clients they see? Is that similar to?
I don't know that part of.
I couldn't find it looking through there, because I always like to break everything down and how many clients were servicing and helping and.
I don't think.
That's not a number that comes out, not important, okay.
Yes, that kind of stuff is.
I mean, they gotta have a certain size area regardless if they have one client for the year, if they have five hundred, so they.
So then the next question that came to my mind as I looked at that, if and when we get our space available, that number will come in the next year so that.
Yep.
Face it, okay.
Alright.
Any further discussion?
Went up on that, what we're paying?
Maybe, or was it maybe two thousand?
What you're paying, we get paid.
But doesn't it look like it was two thousand less?
And you're saying we, we rent that space down here, correct?
We rent it, they reimburse us rent.
Yeah, and we, and we.
They sublease from us.
And that's a positive matter, don't they?
Right, it is.
Actual less than estimate, that it was less two thousand three hundred and eighty one than what they estimated, so last year it was fifty five, and I think it's going to fifty three, that's why I read it.
But, yeah, even though their, their, their payment always exceeds our expenses.
Right.
I just didn't know everything else is going up, I didn't wanna make sure we weren't going up and they're going down.
Know that it went down.
I probably did, but I didn't even, yeah, it went down twenty three eighty one.
Those are the key parts of this paperweight.
Paperweight trees, portraits.
So with that being said, any other discussion, I think we've, any other questions or?
No.
Look for.
What it is.
Look for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Well, she might, I was talking about Eric, to approve the certification of cost allocation plan, any further discussion? Here and I will proceed to vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
There's a line on the front.
I did have a couple of calls in regards to Beaver Bounty and and after I explained it to them, that they were, they were understandable about that.
Took yours shot back at two of them, and they kind of, they could see it. This is some guy probably got about eight or ten of them in the freezer.
You know, and I personally called one of the trappers and said, I will give you X amount of dollars, come over and trap them, I want them out of there.
Where do you get Greek?
You know, with the.
I, I guess it's up to you all.
Who's the guy at thirty nine, like, where Michael's now, that used to track, or that used to do the, the, he used to take all your belts to, who was that?
Oh, it's Long Island thirty nine?
Yeah.
It's out with me about two mile and a half.
Yeah. Yeah, he used to tan there for.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's just a shed, it was, it looked like it should have fallen down a hundred years before it did.
Alright, ten twenty item, the ice sack soil compaction project funding request. That was in the packet also, and we have discussed it in the past.
Yep.
Yep.
So we need to take action on.
How much? Figure out where we're getting that out of, I mean, did we settle on that? No. It's over to decide right now.
We were close, I thought.
Six hundred? Yes, hundred bucks.
I saw that we spend up to six hundred dollars for the soil compaction project funding request through ISA.
Okay, do we need to have the motion or what, what fund that's coming out of?
The motion doesn't need to include that.
Okay, I'll second.
Alright, yeah, a motion in a second, now we can discuss where we're gonna pay it.
Okay. I'm in.
I think I, I spoke with Chuck to ask him what his concerns are, you know, where. And probably general services would be the.
Place to get it from.
General services makes sense to me, so let's just do that, I think that's what we talked about, almost positive.
Yep, then there's no need to amend it, we don't need that. Any further discussion?
All the questions.
Questions and call, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed?
I was just beating you to it.
Will we notify them that we're sending the money, thank you very much. They wanna know.
Oh, the fifteenth I know it's today, never.
Back here. Where we at now?
Ten twenty five.
Ten twenty five.
Yep.
Yep.
Early bird gets the worm.
I'm pretty sure. There you go, come on now. While we got him out before you start here, we had a little discussion about active shooters trainings and our, and we, we, we came to the conclusion that the sheriff should probably be in his in a command, but would you help orchestrate him through?
Yeah, I would, I would, we, there are, there are some classes out there that are available through emergency management. They said they bring some, I think they bring some troopers in to do some of those, and then they also have state instructors.
And would work with the schools and.
Yeah, they, they, they had it, when, when we first started having this a few years ago, they, they were up at the high school on a Saturday morning and went through the place, and they used to go down to the, where the, where the, the old water plant and the utility plant down there, and they, they would down there. If you guys remember Steve Harris, they, they shot him up quite a bit, because he was an active shooter, and they use paintballs. He was just black and blue, had the. Cause he wouldn't stop, they just. Like that, so, anyway, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if you, if you wanna set up a, what you're thinking.
Like Charter Oak and Dow City and those small.
You can, you can do any school you want, you can set it up as a rural school, which might even be better, because, because you'd have.
Response times and all that stuff.
Right, and, and when Dan was here, it's too bad he wasn't around, because he would be real good at it explaining a lot of that stuff, the, the previous police chief, cause he did, he did, when he's on the patrol, he did a lot of active shooter. He might, I can talk to him.
But I think that we don't wanna assume anything, I think that we wanna make sure that our plan is solid and.
Exactly. Well.
I'd address from the.
Wait, I saw.
Agenda, I just.
Yeah.
Don't wanna take that on a whole different path.
We'll talk about that another day.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll do some feelers out there and see what we can come up with, so I'll have, have something for you.
Be great if you could bring that back, that's, that's something that's probably pretty important to work.
Very important, it's just not, it's not if, it's when.
Let's talk about the ten twenty five. E M A purchase of a pickup.
My board, when we made, when we amended the budget, okayed a vehicle up to fifty thousand, of course, the bid was higher than that, so we took a bunch, bunch of stuff out, so we're getting of three quarter ton, not getting, if that's okay with you guys, order a three, a heavy duty three quarter from Ford down here, and it's came up with fifty one seven, I was, I was given fifty one, fifty even, so we knocked it down to forty nine nine ninety seven. So if that's all right with you guys, it'll be dark blue, that's emergency management's color.
He said three quarter ten.
Heavy duty three quarter ton, and that will be able to pull the trailer, I've been pulling it with my half ton.
Twenty twenty.
Three.
And can you give me that cost again, please?
Forty nine nine ninety seven.
Three dollars under the.
Yeah.
What will we trade that three back?
You know. Color savings, yeah.
Now, will it be parked up here at the courthouse?
I will, I, I'm going to park it down by the, by the boat shed inside, it's gonna be, it's gonna be an inside.
Okay.
And the only time it will go out is when, if we're using it for looking at the tower sites, which they've already started, yay. And, and pulling the trailer, if we have a disaster, we're pulling the trailer to, to go and, and to go up to, to schools, like.
Will you be putting like multiple radios in, cause actually, the Monona County Emergency Management Coordinator was on scene.
He had a pickup too, didn't he? Thirty years I have, I've used my own private vehicle.
Monona County Emergency Management guy was on.
Yes.
But will they have any equipment in it?
Yes, yes, there's, there's gonna be like a defibrillator, and there'll be, there'll be gear in there for the guys, the, the back will have. We, yes, I do, I, I got one of those, I know Kyle has been pushing real hard for us to get, get a couple of drones.
Hey, any other questions?
Do we have to approve it here?
That's why.
I think he's looking, it's already been approved by his commission, but he's looking for us.
Wondering what our take action is.
To take action and, and just to give you a blessing, so.
So we need a motion, we, we concur with your board's desire to purchase you a pickup for forty nine ninety seven, I'll make that motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Should have moved and signed it to solidify the E M A purchase of the pickups. Any further discussion? Here and now, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Alright.
I'll get you some information on what we digressed on here, so. Thank you. You wanna bring that, and then maybe in a couple of weeks or something, after elections, and good luck to who's here running, both of you guys.
Thanks, Greg.
Well, see, hopefully we won't have a, have to wait till midnight or four o'clock in the morning or. I, I see there's a lot of food in there, so I'm kinda, I'm just a little worried about. Stress eating?
Elections are stressful.
No.
Come from Colorado?
They come from Sam's Club. Happy gummy worms.
Oh, happy gummy. Oh, happy gummy.
From Colorado?
Thanks for what you're doing. Appreciate it.
Hey, we've got a good leader up in Charter Oak area and and some other ones that helped. They saved a lot of the wealth. The guys are what makes me look good. I was all the, we just did the, we kinda did the directing as Kyle and others did it. But wow, it was it was, they did it like I said, they they saved saved a lot of buildings.
Good news. Thank you. Ten thirty Associate Tower as possible lease negotiation consultant. This was brought to our attention a couple of weeks ago. With the possible rise and wanting to renegotiate a lease that's already in in play, so. Dwayne reached out to this Associate Tower, Associate Engineering, and they are Would be interested in taking that over and Doing what is kind of was suggested that we.
We can use them for all seven towers then?
Yes, we could.
Okay.
So and the negotiations.
For long term.
New lease negotiations and renewal rates are there on the paper. New negotiation twenty five hundred per tower per carrier. And.
Per carry.
Two thousand per tower per carrier for renegotiation.
And renewals. Just a little background on Associated. They built this tower in twenty ten. When we built it, they were actually engineers, and so that's how we started. We, the county, started working with them. They built it for Verizon, or you know, Verizon had worked out a deal with the county to build this tower. And so to replace our tower and so forth, but so they were very familiar with this one. Associated did all of the plan and specs and inspections on the grid road or fire tower. And then they've done new groundwork for us on the Verizon Tower in Sleswys, where we had to set a shelter and Put our equipment on that tower, so they did some limited plans and specs there too, so. They they're already familiar with these two, but they do have a tower lease team that works with cell providers. So they have some background in their ins and outs of So companies.
Just from my knowledge, so let's say that they're negotiating with Verizon. What would Verizon pay per year average on the tower? What kind of a fee would would we get for that?
Presently, they're in the.
Present pays us about, so is it about sixteen hundred times? So what is that about twenty grand? Twenty four grand.
Per year.
Here.
Per year.
Per year.
Per year.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So sixteen times twelve would be what? Hundred and two thousand plus, so about twenty grand for a year. And then it's seventy two hundred.
So do they go out looking for people like when we get these new towers or is it just on a, we have to?
So your towers have to be registered with FCC and FAA. And so as a sensor, when there's a new tower, I go to that website and say, oh, it's owned by Jake. And then I get information from it, and that way I get the contact information, the taxing information, all of that. From there, so if I was a potential renter, I that's where I would find that information. Is is you go to those websites, you know, or use that say, I own one tower for Crawford County. So you can pull up the Crawford County map and it'll show all the towers, and then it shows who the owners are and who the contacts are.
So our contact then would be company.
The contact will probably stay at emergency management would be my guess.
Okay.
Because if somebody comes to do maintenance or something, that's who you want them to contact, but then they would refer and say, you know, Somebody calls and says, hey, we're interested possibly pursuing a lease at this location. Our leasing agent is and hearing that information.
Yeah, so they're not successful in the negotiation. Let's say that they just can't come to an agreement. We don't pay them anything.
I do not know that.
Just curious.
Oh, yeah, I don't know the answer.
Okay, but I.
How much space do they have?
I have never seen completed specs on on the towers that the county built it.
That's a great.
I know there are three legged towers, which are very redundant. I believe I heard Ray talk about that he spaced for one cell provider provider.
And we were gonna do well at one to two.
Yeah, and and I may know more about.
I I don't, I thought we were gonna do a one to two, but I thought two was the number.
Is that is that when it's over with or is there more? Is there more room on those things above that?
We're building up to a hundred and twenty percent, so room for.
Right, yeah. But also your internet providers, you know, that you see popping these eighty foot and a hundred foot poles out in the country For Western Iowa Networks or whomever, you know, they may be interested.
Putting a big.
And repeating their signals, so you know, that's potential. And I and you know, for something like that, your rent isn't near sixteen hundred dollars a month for that. Because all they amount to is maybe a twenty inch or a sixteen inch disc, you know, and a and a three eighths cable, so.
There's one on Donna Reed, as you go south.
So to answer your question, I don't, if if they negotiate and fail to come up with a agreement, I would imagine we'll still be on the hook for something. Because they put time and after that. That'd be my.
That's a question we could probably go back and ask them. By that, but or maybe you guys, once one of you wanna call and talk to them and.
It'd be nice to know because if they're out calling people and they can't come, you know, this could cost us, you know.
Keep in mind though that your your lease consultants that are working for the big wireless carriers are always trying to Take advantage of unknowledgeable people.
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, I'm I'm in favor of.
That's where you'll get in trouble is you'll say, oh, ten percent looks better than three percent. Well, it's ten percent over the Five year term instead of three percent a year or so.
I'm not suggesting I do the negotiation.
That they prey on people that are not.
Right, no, I I I think they're worth their weight in gold.
And these leases aren't something that mandates one year, correct?
Right, that's I I just, that just comes to my mind that if you're just gonna and not get a lease, we paid money that we're not getting any return.
And Martha or myself can ask Associated what their, you know, what what their thoughts are on these letters from Their lease consultants that were gonna say, no, we're not interested. Are they gonna charge for that?
So we really shouldn't take action until we know the answer to that because that could be, I mean, we've never had this many towers before. You know, that we even had to be concerned about it. We had one tower.
Any other question?
Oh, I did talk to for the rest of the board, I did talk to Kyle last night. There are there are some companies that are looking again Into building that Western Crawford and Eastern Crawford, so the sooner we get those up, the sooner we stand a chance of Garnering some some rent.
To get somebody on before they build their own or somebody else.
Something like that.
Yeah.
They just they just appear out of nowhere.
They wanna build a tower with.
Know that answer.
We make contact with Tom and ask these questions.
We're we're full. Right?
Yes.
They would have to do a strict.
There's all sorts of room out there on the.
Could they just put like.
Ty's giving Tom a call right now. I'll see if he answers, so he answers his questions.
Tom, many?
Many.
Looks like a telemarketer called.
Twenty staffers.
Tom, this is Ty Rosberg, Crawford County Board Supervisor. So we were just wanting to check with you. Our negotiations and we had a couple of questions. If you could give me a call back at seven one two two six three seven six seven two.
Okay, then why don't we just, why don't we take no action on that today then? So we hear back on Ty, but I think I'm sure he'll get back to you. So why don't we just move to next week's agenda? Cause I'm guessing once them have been filed with FAA and FCC that they will become We could start getting calls even though our towers are not.
To make that decision.
Yeah.
So to have a negotiating team working for us.
Well, I know our consultants told us that once our name's on that registry, he said, we'll probably start getting some calls.
I can't wait.
All right, ten thirty five, Jake, IT Director, RFP City Center Server Room. We got for us.
I sent it to everybody.
So, um, this RFP basically is strictly kinda I I T oriented. Okay, there's no real serious construction costs associated with it. We're looking at strictly maybe some lines being ran, built Populating the server room, that sort of thing. We are securing the building through this process. Um, so we're looking at cameras and badge, batching stations.
Okay.
Um, and there's also a portion in here. The system that I'm looking at is is called Verkata, and that's why you see Verkata sprinkled out throughout the entire RFP Because that system is actually fully integrated between the badges, the cameras, and then even have a panic alarm that's that I've included in there. So, um, now ultimately, I I did some research on this, and I think if you guys remember, I was Kind of quoting out about twenty grand or so. I think it might be a little bit like closer to twenty two, but, um. But tha- that's what you're looking at here, um, as far as the east entrance on the first floor there. Um, just basically, we're looking at the receptionist and the The east entrance, that's the majority of it. Uh, we've got the APs as far as like Putting access points up there. They're already over at Public Health. They just ride over to it, so there's no Real need for additional equipment. I have a spare one because you'll need three of them to cover that, to get proper coverage. Something off, we can use that and that'll be pop that guy over there and there'll be no harm, no foul in that capacity. So, um, and that that's what I'm pretty much talking about as far as this first, the first floor there. Okay, um, as we go through, there are obviously gonna need to be network runs associated with the camera. Um, and uh, some of the other functions.
Excuse me, when you say first floor, you're talking main floor.
Main floor, yes, okay. Upstairs, yes.
Do we, do we have a camera in the lobby area now at Public Health?
Not currently, no.
But why do we need one? I'm just curious.
Um, basically, the the difference was is that we never considered a camera system over there at this time. Well, I mean, it's security just like any other building. I mean. Yes, camera system, there's a. Yeah, this this building is completely built out.
You are a candid camera.
All the lobbies are covered and even all the entrances, so. Um. Just and I'm basically just taking that concept and applying it over at City Center.
Thank you.
So, um, the only difference is is we're adding an additional badge system on top of it, okay? And the reason for that is, yes, this is all Verkata, everything, cameras, badge system. The, um, even the panic alarm is part of Verkata.
Good.
So, um, Jeff question? Yep, it all, and it's got facial recognition in- included into it, and it is state of the art. Um, a lot of the counties are looking at this system as far as implementation is concerned. Worth County actually used ARPA funds to outfit all of their buildings with this setup. So, um, so and that's why I'm just pretty much just advocating what I've seen across other counties, so. Um.
So when you say a badge system, this would be for the employees to get into work. Would it integrate at all the time clock?
Um, no, we don't have a time clock integration process for it, so. Um, I mean.
Just curious.
Good try.
I mean.
I want everything.
You could, you know, what time did that employee come in? You could, there would be a a timestamp on when they badged in, but that's a little, yeah. But it's not like a true.
Right, a time clock, but you would know when people are coming.
Yeah, exactly. There's a there's a there's an accountability.
We have a on on the room that holds the fridge refrigeration for for medical supplies. Will that have a swipe?
Not that, I didn't anticipate that with this RFP, no. Is that something that maybe I need to consider?
I mean, I think. What do you think? You're that's your, I mean, shouldn't that be a secure area?
I mean.
To get into the room.
That way you know who's been in that room in case medical supplies came up.
Right, no.
How much more would that cost?
I'd be looking at probably probably another grand to two grand.
Maybe worth it.
If something came up missing, it'd be worth it, but if it never came up missing, I mean.
I we've never really had.
I mean, there isn't, it isn't like the, I don't think they keep narcotics.
The Public Health has never emphasized that need, so.
That's why I was asking.
Yeah, they they've been, they like the idea of a camera system. They like the idea of a badge system and a panic alarm, so.
I like all those. When you say camera system, so it's going to record.
Just like it does here. So now the only kicker behind the Verkata system is that we only have a About a month and a half as far as when you start looking, looking at the 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 entry level storage for each camera. And all that, and the difference is is that data is actually stored instead of like, we have a central repository or a DVR. The houses all that information. This actually houses it on the camera itself. So there's there's never gonna be any lapse as far as communications are concerned unless the camera loses power. So, and that's done, and it's power is directed through the cable. There's only one cable that goes into that camera. So.
Um, total project cost twenty two thousand.
Well, that's just for Verkata. Okay.
All right.
Where we haven't talked about the server room, we haven't talked about any of the other stuff. We're talking strictly surveillance in the badge system on City Center. Okay. Um, and furthermore, you're just looking at a lot of this, most of it is equipment that's associated with Verkata. There's like a wireless hub that you're gonna be including in there to control the doors, things along those.
They install this?
We will be looking, yes, I have a contractor that I've talked to, I can, I I've, um, as far as out of Sioux City that actually does all of this stuff.
But that price isn't in.
No, not this time, so. Well, that's what I'm saying, that's about twenty two grand as far as the whole outfit.
For everything installed.
Yes, for Verkata. But.
All right.
So. Um. I'm just making sure that there wasn't.
That's for Verkata's system and the installation twenty two.
Correct.
That's, that makes me feel a little better. I thought we were just paying for the.
That is, I I did get, so I I have a ballpark idea as far as where we're going into with Verkata itself. Okay, um, and that's where that twenty two grand, because they I actually had them do a walkthrough and talked about some things. Now, obviously, if we add additional cameras, we have to change. Now, obviously, if we add additional cameras, we have to change order or something along those lines, that.
Make sure it's right so we don't have to do that.
Right, um, that's going to adjust that price accordingly, so. Um, there's also going to be, uh, moving down to the basement. Same concept, um, you're looking at a badge system on the south entrance in the basement, a- along with the, um. Uh, a badge and a camera sitting in that foyer as well. Now that foyer is a little narrow, so.
On the second floor.
The basement, yeah, sorry, yeah, the basement, yep. Um, that, uh, I need to probably make that change in the RFP and make that safe main or main and basement.
Yeah. Otherwise they'll be going to go upstairs.
Right.
First floor, where's, where's the second floor? Or let me try and put the first floor stuff in the basement.
Right. So, um, but yeah, south entrance, I, 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 I recommend kind of making that foyer just a hair baker, because it's awfully narrow in that south entrance. Just throwing that one out there.
Can be and will be.
Yeah, because, um, otherwise it makes, it's just going to make it hard to get the coverage that you want out of that camera when you're sitting in a box about sizes, a little bit bigger than this chair, so.
Get the other one, use toilet, they have a nice seat, so.
So, um, and these are all in reference to the plans that was, that we have developed as far as the rooms and whatnot. So, going on, moving from that south entrance to the server room itself. Uh, we already have a patch panel for that building, um, and a patch panel is where a centralized location where all your runs come to. Okay, um, the only difference is, is it's not where we, it's not an ideal place, it's in the middle of the basement there. Um, I recommend moving that to the IT room that we've dubbed in the plans. Um, we've got plenty of runs for it, I mean, they've got a nice big old service, service loop like, must be thirty, forty feet in that thing. Um, that you could easily just right over to that, uh, that peg IT room and call her done, so.
Does that end this assignment?
Uh, the moving of it, yes.
Sure, that's, it says to IT.
Yep. Yep, move past the patch panel and there's a box, there's a small little four post rack in there, in that same area, just kick that over there too, that won't take anything. Um, and then, uh, yeah, I, I kind of recommended that we kind of have it mounted to the floor appropriately, so there's not a lot of jiggling. Moving around it since along those lines, because that's the way that rack is designed that they've got in there, so.
Stationer.
Yeah, so, um. And then, um. We'll, we will have a, we'll take the existing switch that we have at Public Health, obviously move that in there. Um, that's what the second line is underneath the server, server room, as far as moving the patch panel. And then we will need a cable run, um, between a network cabinet and a, um, this four post rack that we have. Um, I'm recommending you do purchase a, a cabinet, um, similar to what we have back in the auditor's room, that sits off before about. I, I recommend maybe being a little bit higher, about maybe closer to five foot, but, um, because height is kind of an issue there. So, but, um, recommend putting in a network cabinet and I segue into the ne- that portion next here. Um, so basically what would amount to is you have two switches, one in the four post rack, one in the network cabinet. And the reason for that is because the, the one that we have is all but full, there's like five connections left on it. And if we want to put mental health or community services, whatever you want to call it, and HR, you're going to need that extra space. So, and that's where that second switch would come into play. DHS, excuse me.
I knew it.
Yeah.
I didn't know.
DHS, yes.
We're moving Amy out.
So, um. So that, and then that's DHS and mental he- and, uh, mental health, you'll have to be able to support them and have, um. And I'm thinking about the way we support them is we don't necessarily put cables in the walls for them. I think we just run it off of an AP, an access point and call her done, unless they need additional like printers or things along those lines. So. So.
You're bogging us down with a lot of, uh.
Specifics.
Yeah. Maybe do a broader, broader scheme of this here.
Yep, so, um, other than that, like, I mean, we're just building out a tip standard server room, um, putting some raceways in. And we'll have two net, we'll have one cabinet, one poke four post rack and, um, let's see. Uh, we, we'll, there'll be some other, yeah, more raceway, um, I'm looking, one of the things that I'm going to make a note of, that I'm actually going to ask of our construction crew when we get in. Is when they put power in there, that they put it in the ceiling instead of like along the walls. Because this way power runs straight from the center of that room and you can rotate the rack as you see fit. And then you, it's not a trip hazard either, because it's coming out of the ceiling instead of in front of you. So, um, and, and there's a thirty amp, um, outlet built in, or put into the, uh, construction RFP, so. Um, yeah, and there's just, uh, and then we just kind of go down the equipment area, um. Yeah, Cisco Meraki, that's what we've been using, um, that's the entire courthouse is outfitted with it, that's why I'm recommending that. Um, there's an access, there's an additional access point, and that's the one that's going to service, uh.
Public jail.
Uh, DHS and mental health and, and community services, so.
Nature.
Um, and it's not a very big one, it's like, gonna be six, seven hundred bucks. But, and then the big one is going to be that room's going to have to be secure.
That room you have to be secure.
Yes, so, and there's.
Iron steel door.
Steel, that's what I've asked, I've requested from the construction RFP.
So there'll be a badge access on that door.
Mm-hmm, good. Um, actually, what I'm, we're going to, I, I'd like to do badge access, um, there's also, one of the things I didn't mention with the Verkata system is that they, they actually will allow you to do Bluetooth. So anybody that has a county phone could actually just, and not have to deal with a badge. And that's what I intend for my per, my, my, myself, and not ha- not needing a badge altogether, so. Um, yeah, and then, um, there'll be sensors in that room. So, because you're going to need, obviously we've mentioned HVAC, uh, HVAC into that room as far as separate from the rest of the building. Um, so there'll be something like attention, temperature monitor and things along those lines, um, making sure that the room doesn't overheat or anything like that, so. Um, this obviously is all going to have to take place after we get the original RFP done or finished and that's put to bed. Um, so I'm, I don't expect this to take a large amount of time, it's probably maybe, uh, maybe a month or so. I mean, because all you're doing is running, installing equipment and running raceway, so, running cabling, so. Um, there's, I, I think a month, um, is fine. I apologize, last week, Ty, I was a little cagey about saying that, but when I was looking at it and kind of, so I put on the spot at the time, um. I, I, I think we can get that done in thirty days, I don't see why it wouldn't be possible. So as far as getting all the cable runs and equipment installed and things along those lines, so.
Okay.
Um, the only real question, I think we, we mentioned something along the lines of maybe March first, um, as a date that we were throwing out there, I'm sorry.
Final date or is, as the, the issue date on the RFP?
Um.
What would you suggest the, the issue date on the RFP?
Well, I mean. Yeah, obviously we're going to need to take some time to deliberate and, you know, when they, when we come across some of these bids. So I don't know what our date is set for, what, December twelfth on, or somewhere around there for the construction one? As far as the published one? There's nothing saying.
We're going to award him.
Yep. I, I, I think we award in January afterwards and, um. In preparation for maybe March first or whenever the, um, the construction date's supposed to be completed for the original RFP.
Sound good, I don't know more by then, so how the construction thing is going to go and we can adjust. We really need to take any action on this today if we're not going to start finding out.
Yeah, because I need to edit it for the, the, the first floor in the, in the basement, um. And I didn't have any dates, but I think that could have been easily working out, but.
Yeah.
So, um, so we're looking at probably. I don't know, I just threw a date as far as December twelfth was concerned, I'm not even sure what day that.
That would be the issue date, RFP, right?
Right.
Okay, twelve, twelve, you said?
Mm-hmm, and then make it thirty days, so, January of. Twenty-three.
Word date, January.
I'm thinking, what, the twelfth, that's thirty days, right? I don't, I, I was just thinking about, it's going to go over Christmas and the holidays, is that going to be an issue?
Not for me.
Not for me.
Okay, I'm.
What day of the week is the twelfth of January?
Two days off during the time.
I mean, I'm just saying, if you're gonna, if you want this board to take action on it, would you like to do that on us?
Probably eleventh.
One eleven. I mean, they like meeting extra, but.
Things that is during budget time too, maybe we should put that to the.
Okay, so you, you want to put the, the, uh, seven, eight, eighteen?
Yeah, because we're, we're going to be doing budgets at that time and that's.
And it's okay to do two things at once. I think. So, what do you want, the eleventh to eighteen?
Um.
Eleven.
Eleven, okay.
Trying to keep it moving.
Okay.
Yeah, but then go get.
Okay, site visits. A day for the site walks will be scheduled for.
Wait, that's twenty-two then, as far as that calendar is concerned.
You are correct.
Yeah.
We are there.
So the, the eleventh might not be right. Okay, I'm looking at, okay, calendar here.
Okay, I got the question answered about if, if we wouldn't get the tower thing done or contract and what. I'm telling the board, you need me to ask any other questions?
It's going to be Tom, many? Anybody?
Okay, that takes care of our questions, Tom.
What would the January date be?
Tenth.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry.
Contract announcement.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I figured that call was.
Well, we need to. So. I apologize here.
You too.
This is a middle date, the, it's going to be the tenth, is when we get them.
Of January twenty-three.
Yes, that's when we are supposed to get them. I'm, so, then we have to do the re- I mean, we'll obviously have to review said bids, yes.
When are we going to do these site visits, because don't they have a, don't they want to come look at it before they submit a bid?
Um. Twelve. So. Trying to think. Maybe the fifth, well, no, that's not enough time. That's gotta be.
I would say the site visit should be within a week of the issue date.
Yeah, okay. So we'll be looking at.
So we're still in twelve, twelve?
Well, that word.
Uh, it's going to be January tenth, because. Twenty, uh, as far as a middle date.
What's the issue date?
The twelfth.
December, December twelfth is issue date.
So.
Award date is the tenth of twenty twenty-three.
That's a some middle base, the tenth, because we still got to review them.
Right.
So.
So then the sealed proposals have to be to us by.
January tenth.
Ten, okay, yes.
Yes, and then the site, site visits will be December nineteenth.
Okay.
Nineteenth.
And then a timeline regarding work must be completed by.
Work's going to start March first, so we'll end it March thirtieth.
March thirty, three, okay.
March thirtieth is.
Okay, is that on? I'm just going off of thirty days, it's on Thursday, let's make it the thirty-first, this way it's on, get it into the week.
Thirty-first of March?
Yeah, just because it's the end of the week.
Next project completion.
Project completion, yep.
Give those updates to us.
No accident.
No accident.
Right.
Making progress, though.
Eleventh, we'll review it, is that how we're planning that?
Yes, we'll review the bids on the, the tenth, because that's the twenty-two, twenty-two calendar that you're looking at.
Twenty-three, January. Took us.
So that's why. That's, yeah, um, I looked at it, it's, the tenth is on a Tuesday.
All right.
Um, I don't, if you guys, I don't know if you guys looked at, reviewed it, if you saw anything that needed to be adjusted or maybe something you were, got, had questions about.
Ask a heart doctor.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm not no technician, so I mean.
Sure. Yeah, well, my main focus was, but the, my question is not necessarily geared for the equipment or any of that stuff, but maybe some of the wording or something that maybe, you know.
No.
No.
And we're happy.
My little question was about having a camera, because we don't have one currently and all that kind of stuff, and you answered that, so I'm. What day are we opening these, I'm sorry?
Uh, would be the tenth.
On the tenth, then they will open and review.
Thank you.
And when do we announce then?
I'm, give them a week, so I say the eighteenth, the, the following. Yeah, the following. Seventeen, excuse me.
Yeah, seven days.
Eight days would be helpful, some like.
Wednesday anyway, but I'm just saying.
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Jake.
All right, no problem.
In the claims, the cemetery thing for the website?
Yes.
What is that actually not, can you tell me?
So, the cemetery claims, they were, we actually added the. I'll have to get back to you on it, because it was back, it was back in August that we.
From Spurg Preservation, wasn't it?
Yeah.
All that cemetery information.
Okay, yeah, I think that's what it was associated with.
I think they had it at the. Okay. And it was integrated into the.
Website.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you, I assume.
Oh, okay, um, I guess I wanted, I don't know.
What's that?
I think it's a video from the. Show it.
Wanted to note this. Traverse across the road.
Yeah.
How many tractors? Eleven tractors up through this.
Twenty, probably.
Twenty.
But, yeah, it's just. Cross that road.
That was the fire burning, I spent fuel in the smoke.
Yeah.
Burning in the air.
You start seeing it.
It's actually in the air, it's not.
Oh, yeah.
Touching the ground at that time. Like, I see that currently.
But.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
I think the burn mail will stay in effect for another day or two. Before it, thanks. Any citizens input before we go into closed session, Dan? Mike? All right, thank you, guys. Want to shut that off for closed session?
Yeah, we got to shut that off.
You want to kill that, Jake, so we go into closed session?
Take action to do that.
Right, I'm just having to kill it. The move and saying they're going to close section pursuant to Iowa Code Section twenty-one, twenty-five, one.